Let's take this monster out.
Uh-oh, we've been hacked.
They're they're not talking about you, Bob.
The PFD cannot operate hotels. I mean, that's
That's right.
That's not allowed. So we have to have these other arrangements.
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
The city's PFD is created to help get through that.
Yeah, I mean, exactly. Yeah, we can help facilitate it, but we can't be
Right.
operator and lender. Yeah.
Right.
And, you know, give the public funds, the public agency, you can't do that anyway. So.
I know I should probably know this is a long term intention to have that hotel be completely independent other than its location. So they manage their own stuff. We we make we don't make anything off of them. They don't make anything off of us.
Right, right, right. Yeah, there'll be there'll be, you know, pay the lodging tax at the
Yeah.
county and the city, but yeah, there'll be
Everything else.
operation. Yep, yep, that's the goal.
And the idea is, of course, the major source of their revenue comes from the conferences that are next door. That's
Right, right. I mean, that's been a big challenge for us getting the two or three day conferences because we don't have a hotel right next door. And we really think that, and that, you know, we and we try to tell the hoteliers too, that that we've talked to is that because there hasn't been a new hotel property in this area for quite some time, you know, except for McMenamins, we think there's some great opportunity and except for McMenamins, we think there's some great opportunity and some, a good market share from the get-go. And that's the, that's the argument that we're making to them right now. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think we'll get there.
I'm surprised with the chain, the few chains we have here, that they wouldn't say, you know, this would be a chance for us to up our game.
Yeah, yeah. Well, my experience is typically developers get, they get the franchise or the flag approval there, but it's really a private developer that develops the hotel. It's not, you know, it's not the Hilton, it's not the Marriott that. So, so you gotta develop, but, but on the other hand, the Hiltons and the Marriott's wanna make sure their health's successful with their flag. So they're very particular about who they line up with. Yeah.
So, so the other public facility district that has a hotel right next door is in Pasco. I think they call it Track.
That's the name of the hotel?
That's the name of the, the, um, the conference.
The conference, yes. Okay, yes, yeah.
But, but it's right. I mean, there's a covered awning that connects the two buildings.
Right.
So there has to have been some kind of a, um, some, some kind of an arrangement and they may have a template for how it works.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, and we'll reach out to them too. They're, but we're, we're working on it. Hopefully we're getting close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. I'm good.
Thanks, Bob. Are we up and going? Okay. Public Works.
So, good morning. Susan Eugenous, County Engineer. We have a long list of items on the agenda this week, getting towards.
Say the meeting tomorrow is yours, right?
A good portion of it, yes. So we'll start at the top and work our way through. So we have three call for bids. Two are annual for the road departments, one for equipment rental. And we accept all bids and that is a list that we use as needed through a calendar year. The second is also a use as needed for culvert pipes, beveled end sections, couplers and other drainage system products. Um, we usually get four or five bids and whatever is the most cost-effective is the purchase, is who they purchase from at the time. The third call for bid is actually for the landfill, their portable litter fences to be used to help keeping trash from flying off-site. It cuts down on the amount that goes in trees and what our crews have to pick up up there.
Question on number two.
Yes.
That is sort of to generically qualify a vendor?
Yes, it's a generic qualification.
How do you decide that? Because today that culvert pipe you think you're gonna need is cheaper at the other guy.
So we get a price that they'll honor for a year. And let's say you're working in Castle Rock and there's a vendor in Castle Rock that it's $20 a stick of 12-inch, but.
Buy from them then?
Yes, because even though it's 18 in woodland, let's say the transportation back and forth and the time is not productive. So it's a, we qualify vendors on the materials and then we select them as we need them.
And you're not obligated to use these vendors?
Correct.
You're just trying to get a head start on your homework.
It, it speeds up the purchasing process for us.
How many, how many bidders do you usually work with?
It's usually four or five, isn't it, Sean?
Yeah, about four or five. We usually get more on the equipment side than we do on the culvert side.
So they are very much aware that they're in a competitive market. They have to keep their, their bids low because you'll go to the different.
Yes.
Locations.
They will, so.
Totally different from the other kind of bidding where it's the lowest responsible bid and they only get, we only do the one.
Yes.
I'd be interested to see if the new plant that we had an opportunity to tour over in the Longview in the mid farm puts in a bid.
So I also had a question for item number two for culverts and couplers and drainage system. Does the landfill get to use that as well or are their needs totally different?
And there's a different, they're a different type of pipe and couplers. They actually butt weld, they don't couple. Um, and they use an HGP. A lot of these are PVC pipes that you use in drainage. There are some corrugated HGP, which is a different use than what they use in the landfill.
So they don't go through that process? We still go with the lowest responsible bid for the, for those elements of the cells?
Yes, and those get delivered directly to the landfill. We don't go and pick them up.
Thank you.
Just one off the, off in the weeds question. How did you get Taylor Swift to show up?
I'm, I'm just that good that I could get Taylor Swift to come to the meeting today. Yes.
All right, thank you.
We got a couple of Swifties sitting in here, right?
Okay, so those were our call for bids this week. You can tell us the end of the year because we have a lot of these type of things going on. Um, next is a long list of supplemental agreements for existing consultants. So.
That's overall number six on our list, right?
Yes, we've jumped to number six on your list. So number six is a supplemental consultant agreement with foundation engineering. It is our old as-needed geotechnical one. Doug was a little concerned about the time this has been running on. There's no cost added to this one, but they are, excuse me, the geotechnical engineer of record for the Tower Road project. So we are extending them so we can have their services during construction. So there will be nothing new added to that particular contract. It's just that existing work that they're on record for. Item.
Is Doug suggesting that's the last time we do a supplemental, we need to go out for a more formal?
Yes, but we already have a new on-call geotechnical engineer, which is actually item number seven. Uh, the supplement to their contract to amend their contract from 200,000 to 300,000, update their rates, extend it for a year. Uh, 200,000 currently on their project. I wasn't keeping up in my pile. Currently, we have expended or obligated about 175,000 over the two years that the contract's been in place. So we are requesting to add an additional 100 because who knows what will happen this winter with landslides. This is the firm we use for landslides, boring exploration for foundations and foundation recommendations for our bridges and culverts. So that's number seven. Number eight is a supplemental agreement with WSP specifically for the South Cloverdale Road project. It's a supplement, supplement to extend the contract through 2026 in case construction lingers. Uh, an additional service amount of $68,992.70. And this is to provide services during construction. So during bidding and construction, they will review requests for informations from the contractor and they provide certain field testing during the project. And so we put a number in there anticipating, I don't know what we anticipated. Let's say we anticipate 20 requests for informations and then a certain number of product reviews. So they'll review things. There's two large culverts on this project. So there's shop drawings on the bridges that they'll review and this is the dollar amount that they're estimating for the scope. It's a not-to-exceed, but they don't necessarily have to use all of it.
Who is, who is WSP?
They used to be somebody else and I don't, we've tried to figure out what WSP stands for, but we don't know. They are the civil engineering firm that has designed this project.
Okay, and.
It, it is not the Washington State Patrol.
It's not Washington State Patrol. It is a large engineering firm up and down the West Coast. And I believe they extend as far as Chicago and into Canada. They have offices all over the place.
And what they'll be supplying is the geotech engineering?
No, they, they did the design. So under their umbrella is the geotech, the civil design and the structural design and the environmental permitting for the entire project. So they will provide material reviews, shop drawing reviews, some onsite inspection for specific functions such as making sure the gradation of the rocks in the stream channel meet the specifications and assistance on other items if there's questions and field changes. So we put, get this in place so that we're not scrambling in emergency. Well, because, you know, for no, I may get boulders that spin again.
Yeah, that's quite a hefty increase.
The 67, 69,000?
Yeah.
Uh, 69 on top of 456, 57.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Because you've been working on that for quite a while.
We have, which is part of the issue because we've been working on it for quite a while. So when we started the design, I guarantee you their rates were a lot lower than what they're paying their employees.
You're gonna pull that one on me, huh?
Yes. Today I am.
Then a question, uh, what they, they're liable for any miss? Any problems in construction that were constructed to their, to their drawings, if you will?
So there's professional errors and admission insurance. I guess I'm kind of looking for what you're asking for. You're asking me if there's something wrong. Do they pay for the change order? Am I getting to the crux of what you're asking me?
Uh, whenever you, we contract, there is sort of an implicit sense that the, the work is guaranteed. And how does the work manifest? How, how's the work product manifested? Well, maybe three years from now, it turns out that the, they made an error and did not know that they were building on, on soft stuff or something like that. And now we have to repair it. Who's responsible for that omission?
It depends.
Okay, so there is, they, they could have some liability. It, it, it becomes the object of the courts, probably.
Yes, it would end up in the courts. They generally, for engineers in particular, architects, surveyors, it becomes a question of did they knowingly, were they knowingly negligent is generally what you can come back on them for.
Why is knowingly important?
I've heard that's important. That would be an attorney question.
I would think that the knowingly would mean it's criminal, the non-knowingly is just incompetency.
True. And I think that gets you on the scale of what they're gonna be liable for.
So Susan, about three or four years ago, we had a major repair. I think it was on the South Pool Road because some pins sheared off. Didn't we do a little bit of an investigation to see whether that was negligence on their part or whether it was earth movement or something unforeseen?
So it was a 19, let me see if I get the year right. It was a late 60s, early 70s design. It was an unusual design. A lot of the bridge engineers were flabbergasted about the way it was done. So we did look into why the pin sheared off, but I mean, if you, a standard life for a bridge is 50 to 75 years, 100 when you get the good old ones. So if it was a 1970 bridge, it would have been about 50 anyway where you would be doing major rehab. So it was an unusual design. I think it was, so one of the things they teach you in engineering school is about failure and how that pushes design. So if you look at the old bridges and how over-designed they were, as we move through time, people start pushing the envelope and see how far they can go with lighter materials, things like that. And at some point we go too far. And so especially in the, back in the 40s, 50s, 60s, when our society wasn't as litigious, people were more willing to try something new as long as they didn't feel like it was gonna be a life and safety issue.
The follow-up on that is I, uh, it's more of a general comment. The rationale between I'm gonna build this bridge with a life expectancy of 50 or 80 years, let's say, when in the past we built bridges and we thought they would last an eternity if we could, if we could do that. What has changed in our attitude?
That is a good question that we would have to go back through the history and determine why. I think it was a cost issue. So are we spending money to do a 50 or 100-year bridge? And what's the difference between the cost of that and a forever bridge?
But part of the, part of the factor is, in terms of history, we haven't been building concrete bridges all that long. We don't have very many hundred, hundred-year bridges, at least out here. So we're, we're experiencing it because we're finally getting closer to the hundred-year time span to see, you know, what, what the strength is of these things.
So like the North Pacific Avenue Half Bridge, that was a 1919 bridge that we've taken out. The Al Creek Bridge that you'll see the contract come through very shortly is a 19, well, half of it's a 1923 bridge. The other half is a 1977 bridge. So it's from the original highway. Um, it's one of the ones we have a large grant to replace. And at this point, the 197, 1923 bridge is in slightly better condition than the 1977 bridge. So it's kind of an interesting paradigm on that particular bridge. So.
A doctoral thesis in the works.
Yes. Um, so, yes, one of the books I was required to read in engineering school was called To Engineer is Human. And it talks about some of the history of engineering and how things evolved.
Some of the old bridges from 2,000 years ago are still going.
Yes, they are.
But they're bumpy.
They're bumpy. They're, they don't, they're, they would be considered functionally obsolete because they're probably too narrow for the loads they're carrying. Uh, that's why our two bridges, the 1919 bridge and the 1923, uh, they're, um, no longer load ready, get free. So they can no longer carry the loads that go across them.
But the narrow bridge is good for the bicyclists. It's a bicycle-only bridge.
I figured that's what drove up the cost on this, on this group is testing the dirt coming off your bicycle tire.
And that did attribute to some of these costs. We did have to go back and make some changes for tire dust. That's what held up this project. So this actually, I forgot about that. That does reflect some of the changes we made going back to redesign for our tire dust. Which I was talking to Snohomis County last week. They're in year four of their tire dust review for, with nymphs. So.
You can't make some of this stuff up.
Okay, so that was number eight. My glasses on so I can read what number nine is. Number nine is supplemental, supplement number one to ecological land services. Uh, there, there are one of our two on-call environmental analysis and we're raising their allocation from 100 to 150,000. We are currently at their max of 100,000. We generally spend $50,000 a year on permitting that they assist us with. And that can be anything from wetlands, mapping. They also assist us when we're doing a culvert project. We, the maintenance crew doing a project or you need to put in block nets and trap the fish, they will help go out and defish. So their contracts range anything from a small amount for, to go out and defish to a larger amount when they're working on a more complicated culvert permitting and writing reports and wetland delineation. So we have had a good relationship with ELS. They are a long view firm.
I, I recognize the name and know, know the owner. Are there other engineering firms that are locally based that, on the list? We've got what, nine of them or what?
They are actually the only one that would be local unless you consider Vancouver local right now.
Was that LOCAL or LOCO?
ELS?
Consider Vancouver local or local?
It is a.
I just wanted a clarification.
Loco.
Loco? It may be a little, but so.
They're convinced we are.
Yes, they are. And then item. And then item number ten is with our other environmental services, uh, consultant, and that's with, um, ESA, Environmental Services Associates. Um, we are also adding fifty on to that contract to get them both up to a hundred and fifty. Yes, we spend approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year just on permitting. Item eleven.
Those permitting fees are with the county?
So it's, uh, some of them are with the county, some of them are with the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, Fish and Wildlife, um, for sizing our culverts. Uh, they do some of, uh, that assistance with us. So they, it's local, uh, state and federal permits that they assist us with.
Okay.
Item number eleven is an amendment to the, uh, PBS agreement for the as needed unmanned aerial, uh, surveying services. We're increasing this to a hundred thousand and extending the apparat, uh, ex- expiration date. Uh, we have been using them for flying, uh, headquarters landfill. They're be, doing our base mapping there. Uh, we need to do a flight of tenant way because we're at our ten year mark and you need to do a, a, a survey every ten years, uh, post closure. And then we also use them for our Burma Road survey, which we're working through and it's working out well. Um, so we'd like to increase it to continue using them for the landfill flights. Um, they have been excellent to work with, the surveyors, very happy with the, what they're producing.
Did, did we use them for the aerial photos along the, uh, Calletts and Toodle Rivers? Or measuring or monitoring the landfill? You know, the cord goes out in a boat and, and.
Oh, no.
Does the survey, but, but the aerial photos that we took back to DC were pretty persuasive about all the sand bars.
I'm not sure who did those, so.
There were, those are the ones we got from our GIS department.
Yeah, I'm not sure where those came from. So.
So, so we, we have, uh, about a million, million and a half dollars invested in a whole variety of engineering firms. At what point do we, is it cheaper for us to hire these engineers to do the consulting work? Or are we not allowed to do that because there has to be an independent development of these things?
Uh, so these things are, excuse me, people that we could have on staff. Um, the difficulty becomes, um, some of it's very specialized, like geotechnical is a very specialized field. Um, a portion of the geotechnical comes through the actual boring, which would not be something that we, um, do on site. And we have years, we have busy years and then we have years that aren't as busy. Um, so we spend a hundred thousand on a, on a geotechnical contract where that it gives us inspection services, site reconnaissance, drilling, um, and structural recommendations. So a geotechnical engineer, they are geotechnical and structural in the civil world are your most, um, highly paid. So base salary, you're looking at a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and forty thousand and then adding benefits on top of that. So we have years where we don't use them very often and then other years we do. Um, structural engineers, which goes into a lot of the on-call civil. Uh, it's the same thing, they have different programs that we don't have on, uh, in-house. Um, I would say we'd be more likely to fully utilize a structural engineer than a geotechnical engineer, even though we have a very geotextile mo, geotechnically mobile facility. But with all these fish passage projects, every time we replace, uh, fish passage, we are replacing a lot of our culverts that are between eight and nineteen feet. Um, those are considered sp- short span, but when you replace them, they go over twenty feet when they become a bridge. Uh, we do have our in-house, uh, two of our, actually the last one just got certified, three of the, uh, four engineers on staff. So all of the current engineers on staff besides myself are certified bridge inspectors. So we do keep that in-house, but they do not do the load rating and they don't do the structural design. Uh, but they're certified to do the inspection. So since I've become the county engineer, we've gone from sixty-two to, I believe our number is now sixty-five bridges. And next year we will add one, two, three, at least three bridges to our inventory, um, just because we're replacing culverts. And when we're done, there'll be bridges and we have a few more online, so. But structural, uh, engineers are very specialized and, uh, they like to work on their diverse projects. So environmental permitting, the problem with the environmental permitting is we, um, use different people for different things. So you have people who do your wetland delineations with your ordinary high watermark. And so they're all specialized and so we can pull from their entire staff, um, unless we had an environmental staff who had all the different areas of expertise. So unfortunately, I think, uh, Commissioner Weaver, you're right, we do spend a lot of money on these. The problem, I think, in our world is we're that transition size of the county. Uh, you talk to King County, Snohomas County and Pierce County and even Thurston County. They have a lot of that specialized staff, but we're just that next size too small. We're getting close to needing it, but we're not quite there yet.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Even when we get there, I would think it'd be preferable to do what you're doing now. Uh, when you're in an engineering firm out there, you're an I will employee typically and you've got to stay up with all the regs and all that. Uh, you get a lot more control over what's going on as a, as a client than you do as a boss.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think, it would, I think it would be safe to say, and you correct me, because we have a lot of these on now. We're just basically extending dates and, and getting ready for next year and, and for timeframes on what we think projects are. These are contracts we have in place.
Yes.
There's nothing new here, we're just extending our work with them.
Extending our work and adding a little few more dollars for next year. Cause the most, uh, the majority of these, uh, expire at the end of this year, but we, uh, had time available to be able to extend them.
I imagine we have so many, in a lot of contracts, we have so many extension periods and then we.
Yes. Yeah.
I imagine those are the same here.
Next year we'll be doing most of these again, um, because we do them every, uh, two to four years. So that's one of the things we check every July, August and go, okay, which ones do we need to redo? So we can get them out on the streets so that we're bringing new contracts at this time, so we're never caught short.
I think a quick argument to present tomorrow because the, the cost escalation is, is not a we're, we're not an arbitrary thing.
No.
Costs have really changed and you've got perfectly good example with all the ARPA work, the money went like at least twenty-five percent higher on average, I think.
Yes, we, then there's a lot of work out there and so engineers are in big demand. So in order to get, get and keep their engineers, the engineering firms are paying quite a bit more, so. Okay. So then I have item seventeen is the next public works, um, item. Unless you had a question about Lexington that, yeah, you want it answered because the Lexington Flood Control District budget is in here. I don't believe they made any significant changes, if I recall correctly.
On, uh, on item fourteen, that's through you also, isn't it?
Oh, sorry.
That'll be, I think the next section under purchasing, but we can do it now if you like.
Sounds right.
We can do it now. Uh, so I'm gonna go thirteen and fourteen together. Um, we have the purchasing policy update on for tomorrow. Uh, we've been here with the board a, a few times talking about that in the past. I think you guys have all received copies of that. Uh, we made a few revisions since the last time we were here, uh, especially around some of the small works and, uh, public work contracts. So, and then fourteen is kind of piggybacking off of that. In the past, we've always ran this as one resolution. Um, but we, when, every time we update the policy, we, we rescind the resolution and so we have to do it again. So we split it out as its own item, um, so that we still can use the MRSC Small Works roster. Um, but we did it as a separate item so that, you know, next time we update the policy, we don't have to do this again and again.
The other resolutions dealing with flood control zones and decking district zones, that's just the annual.
The, the special district levy and budgets.
Yeah, and that, well, and then of course the other one is the Lexington flood control. They have to submit those budgets every year for us to certify that we received them.
Yes.
We're not approving them necessarily, are we? I mean, because some of the districts were actually the board of directors for.
So drainage improvement district number one, I am the sole supervisor that's appointed by the board. So that budget, uh, you have a lot to save. And, and then Lexington Flood Control Zone District, because it's a flood control zone district, is actually a budget you guys can go in if you so desire and change things line by line. Because as far as I know, this is on, the only flood control zone district that there was a vote of the people that they'd have a separate board than the Board of Commissioners. So it's a little different than the laws around Lexington Flood Control Dis- Zone District. They're different than Drainage Improvement District One, the Consolidated Dyking Improvement Districts, the regular Dyking Improvement Districts. And, um, Silver Lake is a flood control district. So every one of them has a different set of laws that are followed. But the Flood Control Zone District is the closest aligned with the Board of County Commissioners, except for Drainage Improvement One because it's the small base, small district. And I don't remember the size off the top of my head of how many people and acres that it protects. So therefore it's this small district.
And, um, from, from what I understand, the only drainage dis- district that has a potential financial challenge is the, the Willow Grove one because they know that they've got some pretty major pump repairs and they don't have the revenue source coming in.
Yes, they are this, a, a very small district, um, and they have the highest, uh, service fee for, uh, their residents. And they basically have two pumps that they, they've had a long time. So potentially they're, they're the most likely to have issues. Drainage Improvement District number one, which is your next smallest district, um, they are financially, they're, they're in a good place. Uh, they did just receive a, um, so for their Red Path Pump Station, which should be going out to construction next year, they have a Public Works Trust Fund, um, that's split fifty fifty, um, for the replacement. And then they have cash in their reserves to do the rest of the project. So that is about a two million dollar project, then a one million's coming, half a million as a grant and half a million as a loan. And then the rest from their reserves. Uh, so they are still in a good place even doing that project, um, with their reserves.
That's the one you're the supervisor.
That is the one I am the supervisor for. And that is from just up here, somewhere around Crawford, where the high point is, and then drops down and goes all the way up to about Calletts Gardens Lane, um, in between the railroad tracks and the hillside.
Thank you.
From an engineering standpoint, uh, the pump stations are operated in a manner that you, you'd be happy with?
So, yes, um, so the Woodland operates their own pump station. Um, South Kelso, their Board of Supervisors, they, they are particularly handy, um, group. So they also operate, um, and do most of the maintenance on their pumps. Obviously, anything major, they get pulled out. Uh, Water Sewer, who works for Public Works, um, we have an interlocal agreement with the districts, um, that they operate, uh, the pumps in Drainage Improvement District One, Lexington and Willow Grove. And CDID One also ma- does all of their work themselves, um.
That's, that's the Longview.
That's the Longview District, we, the, the county, we have an interlocal with them, but it's not utilized very often. Uh, not like the other districts where the interlocal is used, um, on an almost weekly basis.
I guess what, uh, what's crossing my mind is we had the discussion about the bridges that were built to last a bit longer, it seemed like. I know there's some pump stations that have been around since before I was born.
Yes.
And, uh, it's not new equipment, but it's maintained equipment. And then the, the pumps for a dyking district are more of a, uh, in case they're needed as opposed to being used all the time?
Uh, it depends on the district. Um, so, uh, North Kelso, there are no natural gravity discharges from that, uh, area. So the, all the water is discharged from one of two pump stations, except for a very small portion, um, where there is a gravity line. Um, CDID Three, I have one gravity line and then it's pumps and they turn on and off as they need it as their forebays, um, built. I'm not sure what CDID One is, I've never worked on theirs. Um, Lexington actually has the most natural drainage because of the way the district formed, because that is the newest district. They have low flow pipes that close, so in the summer they're flowing naturally. And then in the winter, as the flows increase, uh, the flow is picked up by pumps.
About nine years ago, Kalama City was flooded and their pumps didn't work, uh, is there a lesson there?
There is a lesson that you need to make sure your pumps are maintained and that they're turning on regularly. Um, all of these pump stations, so one of the things that'll be done on January first, um, they get their pump hours recorded. And so they know, make sure that their pumps are rotating through and operating regularly.
Who supervises that in the case of Kalama?
Uh, that is a city function, um, because they're not a true dyking district. Um, they, we, they have pumps, we have a couple pumps that are not related to dyking districts, uh, that the county maintains for a couple small areas where the, they're just so low, they can't get to something that goes to one of the pump stations, so there are pumps on those. Um, but that would be something they'd be.
That explains all my other questions, it's like, yeah. Because I, that was an egregious failure and I don't think, um, enough, that was long ago now.
But, but maintenance is the big, is the major challenge because if you get sloppy in your maintenance patterns, all of a sudden something plugs up and if you, they're not regularly inspected. You do have problems, that last time Longview had flooding problems, it's a mattress in a culvert.
Yeah.
And it was stunning, it caused a lot of damage, Pershing Way, they, they still talk about the floods, the nineteen seventies, so.
Okay.
Motion items?
Motion items, motion item number seventeen is the uh, resolution to adopt the American with Disabilities Act's Transition Plans for Public Right-of-Way. So I brought that, what, that's June, um, when we worked through that. And so I just wanted to get that formally adopted so we can start moving forward. It is becoming a checkbox on federal grants. So, uh, we're just making sure ours is done and we will start, uh, working on our, upgrading our ramps. Most of our ramps are.
There was that much paper, right? It was.
Yes, it's this much, that, the transition plans, this much, and the self-evaluation, I think is similar, if not thicker, because we had maps of everything in there. Um, so we are moving forward, uh, with that, trying to get our box checked and start upgrading our, uh, ramps. Most of them are in Lexington and West Longview. And I will bring a couple copies and have them here if anybody in the public wants to see them. So then we have beautiful number, I, eighteen, which is another one of my supplements. I, two of these were, uh, moved over. So eighteen is, uh, general civil with PBS, uh, and it is a separate contract from the flights. Um, we're raising this by two hundred thousand for, uh, engineering services moving forward. Uh, we are currently obligated up to four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We want to make sure we have enough money, uh, for our emerging needs in twenty twenty-five. I do know one of the things that, uh, was discussed last week at, uh, in the county engineers meeting was the, WashDOT has come to an agreement with federal highways, um, are, the legal. Our, the legal load in Washington is higher than the legal load other parts of the country. So now there are, I don't have the number in front of me, but like 600 bridges that need to go, we need to go back to and reload rate. If you guys remember, what was it, two years ago? We, I think it was about two years ago, we had to update all of our load ratings on all our bridges. Now, we're going to have to go back and do a certain number. We haven't been told which of our bridges we're going to have to redo. So that is potentially something we'll be using these as needed civil engineers. We did, that's who we used to update them last time. They are, Crab has requested a one-time grant for all the counties and cities that have to now go back and reload rate, something that we just did. So we'll see what comes out of that. So that's one of the things that PBS could handle for us. They did load ratings. They have done some work on some culverts for us and they are actually the ones who prepared the ADA Transition Plan for me.
I assume if you put in the actual specifics of a bridge, including the materials used, it goes into a CAD system and it should spit out the load rating.
Yes, they have a particular program that they use that everybody agrees.
Do you have access to the, to that program?
Public Works does not have that program. So then the final supplement is with parametrics. And this is a larger increase than PBS, even though they are a, one of our other general civiles. This is specifically because we have asked them to work on the Goble Creek Loop Road North Culvert Project, which is one of the grants we have received from the Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board. So this will cover their scope of work with some additional money left over for additional items that come to pass.
So the Grant Abbott Program does pay for the engineering?
They do. They pay for engineering off of this roster, they don't have any issue with it. So they pay 85% of our costs.
And we move these over to motion because of the cost or scope was just?
I believe they were moved over because of the cost.
It felt like we should talk, yeah, okay.
So this is the majority of them. I have like three or four additional ones that'll be coming, and those are mainly water sewer. This, I believe, covers all of our roads, but one, I think, we got returned. I'm trying to do them in one fell swoop, so we don't have to talk about them as much.
Speaking of water sewer, the rates discussion, is that going to be implicit in the budget or are we going to explicitly discuss it again?
I have more handouts for miscellaneous today.
I beg your pardon?
I have more handouts for miscellaneous item today. Figure we'll let the rest of people get through, that's all right.
Okay. So that takes care of Public Works, we took care of purchasing, right? Okay, so we got finance.
So before they go, so I'm still puzzled. I think when we met, the board was not in agreement uniformly over the rates for the water and sewer. And I don't know what mechanism we're using to decide what, what the rate should be.
So we were going to continue the discussion today. And then next week, as part of the budget process, rates get formally adopted. So we were hoping for more direction today so we can get that information to Kathy.
Today, at what time?
When Kathy's done talking.
Oh, do it under miscellaneous, I think.
All right.
And it would be a separate resolution.
Yes, they're.
Revising.
Revising the rates, yes.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yes, it isn't as the budget, it's a separate resolution.
Okay. Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. So on the agenda for tomorrow, I have two items. One is a public hearing in order to discuss the property tax levy for general fund. So that will be a public hearing. And on that, our resolution says that we will have a 0% increase. There will be no, no increase in our tax levy for the general fund.
The only change will be based on?
New construction, new construction and state assessed value. That will be the only change. And then in this resolution, I also quantified for future information, the amount of banked capacity that you have in the general fund, and that's $612,400. Then for the road, then we will also have a resolution for property tax levy for our road funds. And on that, we are going to have a 0% increase in our levy amount. But then we'll have a 2.98937% increase to utilize the banked capacity. And the banked capacity is $406,608.
For clarification, the mental health services you have here is addressing specifically the tax?
Yes, as part of the property tax, the amount that's related to general fund, there's actually a percentage that can go to the general fund, a percentage that can go to the mental health fund, and a percentage that can go to the Veterans Relief Fund. I don't have those in front of me right now, but I can provide you that information and have it for tomorrow.
We're assuming no, no changes to the, to the status quo?
Right, I'm double checking that with the RCW to make absolutely sure that nothing has changed on those percentages.
So, so what we do with the general fund then bleeds down and affects what goes to these mental health veterans?
Yes, yes. Because you set the levy amount for the general fund, and then there's an RCW that says how much has to.
Bleed down to these others.
Right.
Okay.
And I'll have that as a handout tomorrow.
Road is a separate issue.
And road is a separate resolution to set the levy for the roads. Does that answer the questions for those two? And then in addition to this, we'll have a consent agenda item resolution to accept the special district levies and budgets that have been presented to us. And so there's cities, ports, school districts, Dyking Districts, all of those.
Because each of those boards had to make the decision whether to accept the 1% or not.
Right, so all of those have come, have been coming in and those are part of a consent agenda item, because they, according to the RCW, they just have to be filed with the Board of Commissioners.
Are you telling us you expect that next week too, or?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow.
You'll get, you'll get those tomorrow. They're included, but they're not part of the public hearing. The public hearing is only for the county's levy, the county's general fund and levy in the county's road fund property taxes.
So what you're talking about here is item 15?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And that's all that I have on the agenda for tomorrow. And then I'll have a big agenda item for December the 3rd, which is, as you mentioned, the fee structure, any fee changes. We'll have the infrastructure, we'll have the budget, but we'll do all of the different ones. And then we do the budget last.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So. I'm really getting slow in my old age. A good thing I'm getting young blood replacing me. The, the water sewer rates, is that? I thought you were going to address those.
No, they're going to, they're going to bring it back up and, under the agenda item miscellaneous.
That's, I'd say, after you, not with you.
After, yeah, after I'm finished. And in miscellaneous, they'll bring up the water so that you can decide those rates will be, so that I have them for December 3rd, formal adoption of rates.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. So I guess you're back, huh?
Mr. Chairman, looking at the time, and I know that we, we may have executive sessions for the next hour. Sometimes we have lawyers online at 11:00. Do we have anything like that? Oh, great, okay.
We might just.
That means Sean has the entire hour.
What has changed from last time? Yeah.
Thank you for taking the time again today, Commissioners, to discuss this item. Previously, we had handed out versions of a 3%, a 5%. And today, we handed out a 10, excuse me, a 4% increase. And then we had a citizen comment last week on a industrial hire rate. So we handed out one that's labeled the TIM rate. So I wish he was here today to see that, but.
And he's not here.
I know.
He's not here to hear it.
He's not here. But just wanted to continue the discussion from last week and get some direction from the board on how to proceed and help Kathy out and get these on for the budget hearing next Tuesday. And so on the industrial side, just so we have a little bit more clarity, we have seven consumers that use the industrial rate. So it's not a significant amount of customer base there, and that's all at the Porta Longview Pump Station. One of the other highlights we wanted to point out here is that on the right-hand side, we did double the SDCs up from 1958 to 4,000 and put in plus other agency fees. Depending on the location of the system, we do pass through some of these fees to a third party, be it the regional water system or the regional sewer system, things of that nature. And so depending on what system you're in, it does change that fee structure a little bit.
I don't have the, I left the budget sheet back there from, from what I recall, our rate structure was, was paying for the service. Where we, where we fell short is what we felt we needed in for future replacement.
Correct, yeah.
The system itself is covering, but not covering the future replacement. Although trying to get a handle on exactly what future replacement, how fast that happens is a little bit difficult to.
Yeah, and I think.
Do, it's kind of a spit in the wind type thing.
And we printed that sheet last week, I believe. The lagoons plants, the loss systems and water system, on that nature. We do know the lifespan and where they're at in that. The harder part is going to be more of our older piping, either the AC or concrete piping. And we know when it was last used in the industry, and so we can get an estimate of the youngest bit of it. But some of it may be older than that and needs to be replaced at that time as well. And I think we're working on some of those projects currently.
With the current 750 that we were setting aside and our rates from last year, it doesn't, we end up tapping into reserves.
Correct.
Right, so we're trying to set it so if we take out 750, although we really think we need to take out a million plus, but I don't know that we can get there, but.
Right. Yeah, so we do have, you know, our vendors are increasing in costs, our chemicals, our water suppliers, things of that nature. We also do have a set increase in the union agreement. I believe our labor is 3.5% plus benefits this year. I'm not sure what that on the, on the benefit side looks like, what percent that is. But we're just trying to keep up with the cost and keep funding our reserves for at least a reasonable value to keep the system working. We don't want to fail the citizens in the future when their system stops.
Yeah, well. I'm probably more with you on, on keeping up reserves, because if you don't have, prior to 2018, we didn't even set any reserves. So the system, if you take the reserve amount out, the system is paying for itself. It's just not, it's not able to handle what we think we're going to take on.
It's paying for operating costs, not the capital, not maintaining the capital, so.
So that's more of an argument for me than, than contracts gone up 3.5% or whatever, because operation-wise, it seems to be solvent. It's just capital improvements that we can identify or try to identify coming down the road is where our shortfall is.
Yeah, our system replacement is the shortfall, yes, sir.
So I, I've been thinking about this over the week, and it's one of these things that I think people, you know, there's certain, we do a lot of services, I think, are just way beyond what we should have the scope to do. But these are one of these things where people expect to have water, they expect to have, be able to dispose of waste products and whatnot. So I, we were sitting at 3, 4, 5, I think, last week.
I think so, yeah.
I, I'm willing to go to, go to 4. I don't know what to think about the industrial. Does that make a whole bit of difference to them? I mean, are they going to sit and holler to us? It probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference to us either, does it?
No, and like I said, currently, that is a pretty minimal system there. And I do believe it pays for itself.
But I'm okay with that rate increase, just because we're still trying to make up system-wide for the capital needs and maybe not the capacity they can. Give it a little bit more.
I tend to agree with that. I think hindsight would tell you, we should have been setting stuff aside before 2018, right? But we didn't, so here we are.
Yeah, I can go along with that. I do want to take the soapbox opportunity, though. You know, we're 36 trillion in debt because we never actually put out the, the costs as identified explicitly. It's always implicit. And we're in the bind on the water and sewer, because until 2018, we weren't putting things explicitly. As long as we continue to hide costs in general, we're going to end up with a problem. And that's one of the things I mentioned last time, when we have, I read through here and it says. When we have, I read through here and it says 25% discount, low income senior, you know. It really should be two different programs. We really should have a program that says a proper business on the water and sewer is going to mean that the rates, the actual rates have to be this. And you make those rates. And then you have another program here that says from the, however you voice it, you'd identify where the subsidy, that there is a subsidy. And that way, there can be no mistake. And, and if I were a senior and I'd see that you were bending over, over backwards and giving me a break, I'd be a lot happier than thinking somehow, I don't know where all the costs are, but I'm sure you're screwing me. Anyhow, that's my soapbox.
Which one are you guys? Either one?
I'm happy with the 4%.
I like, I like the one that's listed as the TIM rate.
The TIM rate.
You see it at the top?
The TIM what?
The TIM rate.
Oh, the TIM rate, yeah. I'm okay with the TIM rate.
We can work with that.
All right, and if you want to let him know his suggestion was taken.
Don't build his ego too much.
You need to prepare a little certificate for it.
I, I know, right?
Just for the record, I would opt for more, but I can live with that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Did that help you out?
Indeed it does, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's all for agenda unless anybody had any additional miscellaneous.
I wonder if I could take a moment. I, I, I was at the Veterans Advisory Board last week. And there wasn't, there wasn't a quorum. So there were no decisions made, anything like that. But it, it's really clear that they're still building up funding there. And frankly, I can only say it in a pejorative way. The fact that it's building funding up is there are all these efforts to increase the sort of welfare aspect of it. And I think we already have umpteen programs. And I, what I'm thinking is, are we allowed to even think about, about using the money instead of trying to find places to plant it? How about tunnels to towers or wounded warriors? We could make a commitment to them. And that where I'm very confident it's going to people that we've damaged by our policies. And we're trying to help make them whole. We'd never be able to, but we can try. So I thought I'd throw that out for discussion.
Is that, did you discuss that with them or you're just throwing that out there?
No, because I'm not a board member.
Oh, gotcha.
Right, so I, I figured.
So you would be proposing a request for proposals from veteran service organizations?
No, I'm thinking specifically, we would, we would ask the advisory board or maybe we would do it, I, I don't know what the regulations are on that. But people are asked for, I don't know, 11 or $19 a month would go a long way for tunnels to towers, say. I mean, I, I give them out of my pocket also. And I'm thinking spending 400,000 right now for one of those outfits is, to me, not unlike what we did with Habitat for Humanity. I don't know what the legalities are, but I.
So it's just a matter of getting around the, the legal restriction of no gifting of public funds. However, to make it legal to donate.
Yeah.
So they'd have to, they'd have to have a project locally within our borders.
It's certainly the gifting of public funds, I find, is a very misused term. Like we had to stand down and you could come in and you can get free this and free that. Where does that come from? Public funds, so.
Yeah. If you're looking for an answer, I'm not opposed to those type of things. If you can partner with somebody that gives you leverage and they, and they can actually do more than what we could do or.
Well, I'm trying to avoid the, the constant pressure we face for, I want some of those dollars. And I'm very good because I really have a heart for these people and this and that. We already have two proven entities, maybe there are others, but to go for an RFP, it's like, how do you decide? I mean, I, I cannot imagine somebody's going to complain if we give money to tunnels to towers or wounded warriors. Certainly, those are for the benefits of the veterans. And those are veterans who have been materially damaged.
Yeah, and they do have the ability to leverage those funds into more than what we can do as individuals.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It's like Habitat for Humanity.
Yeah, exactly.
So that'd be just something to, to think about. And the two gentlemen in the pew number two there may chime in on that, of course.
Be worth of the discussion, for sure. Okay. Any other? Miscellaneous, okay. We'll move into HR.
Good morning, Jessica Lauren, Human Resources. I have a request from the Assessor's Office. This was previously workshopped under collective bargaining. She's requesting to reclass her Admin Assistant III to an Administrative Specialist position, which is a 5% increase. Do you want me to do all three or just separately?
I think she, we worked up, shopped it, didn't we? And we talked, so why don't you just hit all three? I think we're familiar with it.
Okay, and then the second item is to reclassify her, one of her GIS Specialist III positions to a Lead GIS Specialist, which is salary grade 245. And then the last request is a new position, but it's replacing a previously vacated position of Administrative Assistant III in her appraisal division, which is salary grade 200.
It's worthy to note, if I remember right, that all these changes actually result in a reduction in, in salary expense.
Yeah, I believe she said it was roughly about 60,000 saving, dollars in savings.
So the vacant position is being canceled and eliminated, or is it being held?
It's just replacing that vacant position.
So that, that, that other position will go away?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm good, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
And then the next request comes from Public Works. They're requesting to fill an Accounting Specialist II position, along with any domino effect the person put in their two weeks' notice last week.
It's a position that needs to be filled.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a request for two executive sessions. One is qualifications of an applicant, and the other is collective bargaining.
What was the second one?
Collective bargaining.
Estimated time?
Um, say 20.
20? Okay, so we'll adjourn to executive session for qualifications of an applicant, collective bargaining. Total time estimated around 20 minutes. Okay. total time estimated around twenty minutes. Okay. total time estimated around twenty minutes. Okay. Well, this is, sorry, back from executive session, no decisions were rendered. Anything else? See nothing else? We will adjourn till tomorrow morning.